Good evening, everyone. We begin a study session of the Board of Education Agenda August 26, 2019. May I please have the Pledge of Allegiance by Ruben Frutos, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ruben. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Governing Board Member Garcia is ill this evening. Governing Board Member De Leon?
Present.
Governing Board Member Hanson?
Here.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Here.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Here.
Now we'll go to the approved study session agenda for August 26, 2019. May I have a motion to approve the study session agenda of August 26, 2019?
All move.
Sandra De Leon made the motion. May I have a second?
All second.
Teseña Cuarenta made the second. Any questions, any comments? So, none. May I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero, because Linda's absent. Okay, we'll go to the hearing section. Persons wishing to address the board should fill out a card located on the table by the door and submit the completed card to the secretary. Speakers will be called in sequence during the hearing section, which is limited to one hour, and each speaker to one presentation of three minutes unless the board wishes to waive the time limit. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson to address the board. Persons wishing to address the board on a specific agenda item at the time of the item is under discussion are limited to three minutes each and will be called to speak following the staff comments and prior to the board's discussion and taking action. So we do have some blue cards here. So we'll go first with Reno Rendula?
Thank you.
And Mrs. General.
Good evening, good evening to everyone. Once again, the Paramount resident, led by parents and guardians, are here together before you, goal board members. Based on its common to always demand for an eventual term limit that must be initiated by you in the spirit of exercising the constitutional right of freedom of choice and therefore on your shoes. Now hope it is not motivated by greed. Now on your absence, the Paramount resident have no choice but to bring this very significant issue to other probable means such as elevating this, you know, significant issue to a mission or ballot for Paramount voters to amend it. In reality, truth of the matter is that California Constitution Article 16 authorizes cities not limited to school districts to provide for manner in which the times at which and the terms for which the members of boards shall be elected for their qualifications, compensations, and removal. In this case, I agree with this in the spirit of democracy. Without this very important significant term limits on school board members, the very sad thing is that Paramount residents can never expect a plan for an election for an open seat bucketed by a previous member. The gross disadvantage with that is the newcomers who are well suited and experienced for the job as a prepared enforcer, educator, for the schools' academic and moral standards for all the students are being discouraged to serve, allowing the status quo for decades without a significant change to the school district. In view of residents' demand for a term limit, you board members shall never take this for granted and honesty, transparency, professionalism must be adhered as always in the board and leave the voice of the majority of the Paramount residents be heard and respected in the essence of the civil society and not dictated by very few who runs this call in the purpose of self-gains and interest and thank you.
Thank you, Reno. Next person will be Sandra Decay. Term limits?
Thank you for the opportunity to address this board and this meeting this evening. I too am concerned about term limits for not only our city council but for the members of the school board. I have lived in Paramount for more than 50 years. I have seen members of this school board who have been in place for decades over the Just look at, you know, Esther Caldwell, Richard Caldwell, before they went over to the city council, and others. Those are just a few. I could name more, but I'm not going to go into that. We citizens are tired of the same thing. We call, we address our complaints about conditions in our schools, the safety of our children, all these things. These are issues that are very dear and deeply enrooted in our family, but we did absolutely nothing. We did lip service or we did threats, which is wrong. But the same thing happens over and over and over again. Nobody listens to our concerns. So our children continue to be sickened, our schools still go down, and their grades go down, and nothing gets taken care of. We can't even address other issues that are desperately needed in our schools. The lack of teacher, you know, our teachers shouldn't have to pay for setting up their classes and spend hundreds of dollars, and they don't get big salaries. Why do we have to put up with this? These are issues that have been around for decade upon decade upon decade. It's time that we get some fresh blood in. It's time that we get people who care more for our children than for their pocketbook. And quite frankly, it's time for term limits. The president only bids two terms, the governor only bids two terms. Why then do members of this board and members of our city council get decades of serving, getting the profit from it, but we as citizens get nothing? It's time for a change. That's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me my voice.
Thank you, Sandra. Next person will be Gerald Serra, Mrs. General.
Good evening, President, board members, committee members. Today, I would like to mention the chronic absenteeism of board members, one of your home. This seems to be a distraction, but also a disability to discuss between the members, district issues, and also to make the own decisions. In terms, we do have chronic issues with students that we think that needs to be addressed, but we also need to address the chronic absenteeism and by order. Also, term limits. At this, been in place many years ago. Paramount Unified School District does not meet this condition. Paramount Unified School District needs to reach its potential. What has been, and this is a question that I know last time I didn't get answered, but I do want, I would like to get the response. What has been the water test outcome, the results from the mandated state department? I would like to know that. Also, what has Paramount Unified School District done to improve its water system, to provide water that is a basic necessity to its students? We know we had the filtration stations, some of them were exposed to elements. It's useless that we have a water filtration system if they're exposed to the elements when we have this issue with air. And I know some of the responses that have been sent out is that this is by school administrators saying that the air issue does not pertain to the school, it does it outside the perimeter. You know, you would think, like, who's making, who's writing this stuff up? Yes, it's outside, it's in the air. How can you control air, you know, from boundaries, from the fence, from the chain of defense? You have to ask yourself, like, which administrator would write something like that and send it up to the California public education as evidence? You know, you have to ask yourself that. So I would like to know what's being done to provide the basic necessity of water to the students. You know, I still have founding members in the school district where they're being asked to bring cases of water. Like, again, why are students being asked to bring cases of water when, correct me if I'm wrong, Paramount Unified School District has a budget of, what, $165 million? You have administrators getting six figures, and you're asking students to bring water to drink for basic necessities when they're playing public, like, when they're in public activities in a public school? Again, I would like my answer, my question answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald. Next is Rodolfo Barragon, and there's no subject.
I got a question. I noticed that all your speakers work, but that speaker don't work.
I think they need to push the button.
What's going on with that? That's discrimination.
Someone busted, she was on for you.
No, I don't know. She has a loud voice.
Rodolfo here? No? Okay. So next will be Andres Rivera. Term limits?
I'm sorry, the name again was?
Andres Rivera.
Do you guys remember former council, uh, school board member Tony Peña? Everyone? Yeah? Okay. Because I, you know, I grew up in Paramount, and there used to be a lot of gang violence out there. They used to tag on the walls, and I used to be really scared to go play outside in my skateboard or on my bike, you know, and stuff like that. And then here comes Tony Peña, and we elected him. He was the right man at the right time, and now I think we're all happy that there's a lot of things implemented, proactive approaches to reducing gang violence in Paramount, and that's a big part thanks to him. Like I said, he was the right man at the right time, and we have to take things like that into consideration so we could implement these term limits and we could get the right people at the right time. Another good example is, obviously now, there's been a lot of awareness in Hexavalium Chromium Six, and what did we do? When there was a seat available, we had, I'm sorry, we voted, and we voted for, I believe, once again, the right person that's actively doing something, and that is Ms. Toni De Leon, and I would like to give a round of applause for her. And just to end with something to kind of help everyone here, not just anybody in particular, I wanted to say something. I have two things. I have one, I took a picture of it today because I work at a school district, and this is the philosophy of our school. And it is, okay. I'm sorry, this is the wrong one, but this is what I wanted to end with anyways. This is words from Pablo Picasso. "I am always doing that which I cannot do in order that I may learn how to do it." Now, end with that. Give you guys time to let that sink in.
Thank you, Andres. Is Rodolfo here before we move on?
Good afternoon, good evening, board members. President Carmen Gomez. So I just wanted to reflect and thank the board for, I think, I think you gave us a great lesson in how government, like, kind of functions, which I think that a lot of people are just not aware of. You know, last, last time you were here, you know, you talked about, you know, there's the minutes, and then there's the, the agenda, you know? I think clearly we want to be encouraging of more people participating in the governmental process, so I think just like, knowing what minutes are and talking about, you know, what is the best way to convey the minutes? And of course, you know, you talked in depth about how, you know, you voted, three of you voted for having minutes that essentially list everything that the public and you yourself say, and I think that's really great that, you know, you came to that decision to really talk about the transparency, because of course, you know, in many years from now, no one's really going to be looking at these YouTube videos, but they may review the transcripts, and it's just so much easier, clearly, that, you know, you can see everything, and so I thank you for, you know, letting the public know about, like, everything that was going on there. And I also really appreciated how there was this discussion that I had never, just, I never had thought about that content, and so you played a great educational role, and I just wanted to say thank you for that. You know, there's distinction, but you know, like, what is the board? What is the superintendent? What are the voters? Like, what is everyone's role in this system of government? And I guess what we learned, I didn't know, you know, I don't think a lot of regular people know. Of course, there's the voters, there's the people, and the people then decide through elections how they're going, how they, what policies they would like. It's how, well, they vote for certain people that advocate for certain positions, and of course, in the last election, we saw that all of the new board members who pushed for things like term limits, who pushed for the environment, making sure that we have a healthy environment, those candidates then became board members. So it's very clear, like, there was a democratic voting process, and then the people decided to put those three board members up there, and now the three board members are, you know, representing the community in that way. So I think that's really great, and then how, you know, they talked about how they are the board members, we elect them, and then, you know, the executive cabinet superintendent kind of like implements their decisions. So I think that was really educational, so I want to thank the board for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodolfo. Okay, so that was the last speaker card. So, thank you, everyone. And now we're going to information items. This information is intended to keep the board informed on various district business matters that do not require formal action by the board. So now we're going to go to our general services, communities survey on term limits. Mr. Adam Problowski with Problowski Research will present the Board of Education with the community survey results on term limits.
If you recall, we were here about a month ago or so reporting on the results of the survey, and you asked us to come back, and we're happy to do maybe a deeper dive into some of the specifics of the data, get some more background, some more context, answer whatever questions you have in a more, I guess, focused format. So would you prefer me kind of go through an overview again and then deal with questions, or what's the best format for you?
I think an overview would be nice, because I believe we have some new residents in the audience, so the review would be nice, and then from there we'd ask our questions.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right. So this is a voter survey, and I'll go into the, right away, the methodology. A lot of words here, but essentially, we focused on likely voters in a November 2020 election, and that is compiled by looking at vote history and looking at kind of the dynamics of the moment to identify who might show up in an election in November 2020. So we modeled for that. We talked to people both live on the telephone and then also had the opportunity, people respond online. We didn't get a lot of online participation, which is kind of unique. Most of the time, we have about 50/50 or so. Paramount's a kind of a unique community, and the surrounding cities that we included, so we had lower participation online. But in the telephone environment, we offered people the chance, we talked to people on their landlines and on their mobile phones. And in a community like Paramount, we have 88% of people who participated on the phone were on mobile phones, which is very typical. 13% of the people chose to respond in Spanish. That doesn't mean that 13% only speak Spanish or that the others don't speak Spanish, it's just the comfortable language that they chose, and they had the option. And the people that did respond online were able to do it on their computer or their tablet on their cellphone, and the original underlying data was compiled by the LA County Recorder, Registrar Recorder, and then we enhanced that voter file data to make sure we have the most current phone number, email address, mobile phones, all those things, to make sure we're really reaching the voters where they're at. And just by way of background, I think everybody knows, but we do polling, public opinion research, focus groups, mostly for government, all throughout the state, and actually nationally, but mostly for government. So with that, I'll kind of go directly to the categorize. We ask an open-ended question, what's the top issue facing your school district? And the key thing here that we like to say is, there's nothing, there's several things on the list here, all things that are potentially addressable, but the most important thing is, there's nothing that's off the charts. There's nothing that's 30, 40, 50% of the public saying, you know, "I can't believe," and they really passionately believe that there's a problem, a challenge. And that usually, this is very typical, there isn't some overarching issue. Here you see them kind of laid out. Some people have a concern over the quality of education, some people, there's concern about lack of funding, class sizes, but again, nothing overarching, but certainly all things to potentially be addressed. We ask a question about term limits, and this is formatted in essentially a similar way that might appear on the ballot. When you go to the ball, polling booth, or you're sitting at your kitchen table, filling out your absentee ballot, there is what they call a ballot label. And this ballot label reads, "Shall the total amount of time a person may serve on the Paramount Unified School District Board of Education be limited?" We didn't give the details of how many years, we didn't give a detail of how many terms, or a lot of those other details that might potentially be in there, like fiscal impacts, which, you know, there wouldn't be any in this case. And 68% organically said yes. And, and so that's our kind of come out of the gate answer for what people say. There's also 20% who say no. We don't want to ever marginalize those people. And also the 12%, we round out from 11.7, those people who say they're unsure, they prefer not to answer, mostly unsure, they just don't know, they don't have the context for it, they'd rather not give us an answer. So we then kind of gave, that's the unaided answer. We then kind of gave some background to get some context. People, a lot of people don't necessarily know what their school board does, your last speaker kind of indicated how the government works, what's the, what's the process here? So we gave some very succinct details about what the Board of Education is, that they're elected to represent the people, that there is, you know, five board members to a four-year term, and then we kind of went into the, some more background here. And we ask a question about holding an election, and if the voters decided to decide whether to impose term limits, the Board of Education members would, this election would essentially cost as much as $60,000 to put on the ballot. So even though there's a, an election in November 2020, as a district, you have to pay the county registrar to host your ballot essentially, and that could cost, that would cost extra dollars to do that. And in this case, we indicate, we explain, you know, those resources could potentially go to other things within the district, you know, how does that, that change your opinion? In this case, it really doesn't much. In fact, in fact, 56% say they're more likely to support the vote for, for holding an election for term limits, knowing that. And if you look on the right-hand side, we have two different other numbers. One is those who are initially voted no, how that affects them, and those who are initially unsure in how it affects them. So you'll see those as a theme as we go through. The next question we have is, I think we, yeah, the next question we have is, if term limits were passed, current board members would continue to serve the entirety of their current term and still be eligible to run for reelection? So this is the, kind of explaining the fact that you can't, you're not just throwing people off the board, and theoretically, I think it's pretty difficult to, to limit, you know, your attorney will probably give you some advice on that, but I don't think you can kind of go back in time and, and limit board members' ability to run going forward. So I think this basically explains, you're really not going to make much of a change today if you decided this is what the voters wanted to do. And again, you have a progressively, again, additional support for going with the term limits measure at 60% essentially, rounding up. We have some statements that are agree, disagree. Our goal, as you see throughout, is to ask questions in different ways to make sure that we're not getting any false positives, make sure we're capturing people's ideas as much as possible, make sure we don't have any concern over people's understanding. So in this case, we have a agree, disagree statement. The school district loses, district loses all the experience and knowledge board members acquire over their years of service when they're forced to leave the Board of Education due to term limits. A majority, 52%, agree with this statement. Our goal, I think, I think the, most of the, most people understand as researchers, is not to broadly influence the outcome in any way, our goal is to really get to the root of how people really think. And so we make sometimes declarative statements like this to see if we can't get people to grab on to one side or the other, kind of almost, as you'll see later, how a conversation might happen in, in real life. So in this case, a majority says they have, I guess, some concern, or they agree that this idea, there would be this institutional knowledge loss, a draining of institutional knowledge, and there's concern for that. 44% though disagreeing with that. We also make another statement here, and we say, without term limits in the near, it's near impossible for non-incoming candidates to get elected to the Board of Education. A large number, two-thirds, say that they, this is true to them, that they think it's impossible for someone else to get involved if there is no term limits on the board. And then, term limits with, will bring new board members with fresh perspectives and new ideas to our local schools. A big, big number, 88% agree with that concept. Again, I caution, you know, we use fresh perspective, that's a, it's a charged statement, it's very, you know, it's language that might push people towards one side or the other, and we're okay with that, because we want to see where people go when, when faced with a message that they might encounter from a neighbor, let's say. And so in this case, fresh perspective, I think, is the driver there. So in this case, we have kind of a similar situation, where we kind of put it neighbor to neighbor, and we have Jones versus Williams. And so we have two residents, and Jones says, "Board members are just there to collect a paycheck." Forgive me, I'm, I'm just saying what Jones says. "Funded by the taxpayers, term limits will make sure that they don't get rich off of our money." I think that's a, again, it's a charged statement, I think, based on the answer from the next one, it may be a little bit ill-informed, but it's what might actually happen in a conversation. People might think, there's a, there's a, we'll talk about it a little bit more later, but there's a- there's a greater distrust for government in general in America today. Over the course of the last two and a half years, we've been gravitating towards greater distrust of, of government. So that's kind of the kind of thing for someone might say. Williams, on the other hand, says, board members are substantive members of the community and they, they make about $400 a month for their service. Term limits will not help our children, children or schools in any way. And here you have 49%, almost 50% saying they agree with the original statement that board members are just trying to collect a paycheck and we got to stop them from essentially getting rich off of the taxpayers' money. And, and then you've got a big, you know, over, over a third who say, they agree with Williams, who say it just, it's not going to help anybody and that they're only making the $400. You also, I think it's important to point out, so 13% don't know, don't have an answer or uncomfortable giving an answer. So that really could essentially change the dynamic to this answer. So whereas the other answers were pretty definitive, this one's very mixed, I would call it. And then we, we go into some of the details. Look, if, if, if term limits are going to be imposed, they could be for one term, four years, two terms, eight years, three terms, 12 years. How many terms would you, you'd like it to see? You've got kind of a cascading numbers here, right? 43% say two terms. One term wins at 37% and three terms at 16%. So you could certainly say that over 50% want two terms or greater is, is one way of, of couching it. And then you also have some people who, we didn't, you know, who basically said, okay, fine, I still oppose term limits altogether. And a few who are unsure. And this, I think, you know, is, is helpful in the, if the policy goes forward. Here we put the numbers side by side and we started out, if you recall, with 68% support for term limits. We again asked the ballot question. And then support for term limits goes up as we progress through this. I, I wouldn't suggest that this is a, oftentimes when we're doing this for, let's say, a tax or for some other kind of a, a project that might become before the voters, we almost wage a mini educational campaign in the process of a survey and we say, this is what would happen in a vacuum outside, exterior influences. In this case, we really weren't trying to accomplish that. So the, the influenced or the informed result isn't necessarily what would happen if you said, told the whole world about term limits. It's just based upon the several questions that we asked. But nonetheless, worth kind of looking at the numbers. We asked people why they would vote yes. And, and we like to ask why because we want to make sure we understand the, the details. The number one answer was, you know, need term limits to prevent abuse of their power. And, and then it brings new ideas and perspectives. So here they're kind of echoing back some of the things that we've said during the survey. We need a change, need different people in office, but certainly a, a message you hear in other places. Better district management, doing their job, serving the community. So different kind of concepts here. What's nice is in the more, in the full report, all the language, the actual words that people say is in there, if you take a look at it. And you kind of have a context because you see the demographics of who's saying it, overlaying it. So these are essentially categorized from those, those sets of words, but you can really see the flavor of what people are saying. And then why would people vote no among those people? Shouldn't have term limits, they're doing a great job. Need more information, would lose their inherent knowledge, again, hearing back what we, a message that we suggested might be out there. It's a waste of money, there's a concern over wasting the, the resources for the election. So we also asked if they have children under 18, which, which most people, both voters don't. And, and that was the, the end. And this is the board presentation. I'll, as, as board members know, there's a lot more detail to the research. There is information based upon how we conducted the survey, based on age and gender and party and, and the mode, how people took the survey, based on language taken in. So for the purposes of kind of presenting it, we kept this presentation, but we can answer questions about any other part of the, the data. And, and I'm sure that's, you know, that'll be publicly available as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Problowski. Any questions, any comments, any discussion? So none?
No. I mean, last time he came, Mr. Problowski answered all my questions. And I know the, the community was in favor of term limits. So I don't have any questions.
It was very comprehensive. And once I had an opportunity to read the entire report, I felt like all of my questions were answered. I appreciate that. If I'd have had more, I would have reached out to you, but I'm comfortable. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. As I mentioned before, this is a great research that you did.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So with that, we want to take a vote tonight to see, to make a determination of putting the term limits on the 2020 ballot. Next month, if it passes, next month is September, we will, we will bring it to say what the description or what we want to add to the ballot on how many years or what we want to add to the description of that election. So with that, may I have a vote, please? Can you, can you do the vote for me?
I thought this was just a study session.
No. Last time we, at the last meeting, we were, we, we determined that today, after Mr. Problowski would come, we would ask to place it on the ballot if it passes. And then in September, we would come back with the description. Am I correct, Superintendent?
My remembrance is that, that you asked for a study session and that Mr. Problowski, Mr. Problowski could come and answer any questions that we had. There's nothing on here about an action item.
Okay. Well, I was, I was in the impression that Superintendent Perez repeated it and that was my assumption. Can you correct us if we're?
I, I must confess to you, I do not remember, I, I do not remember if we said we were going to put it, bring it in September to whether or not to take a vote to put it on the ballot or if it was the night that a vote was going to be taken. What I remember, and we can go back to the archives and look at that, thank goodness we have that. What I remember is in September that we would bring it back. That's why there's not that, although it doesn't preclude the board from taking a vote, but that was my recollection.
Okay. Any other board member that has a recollection?
I remember that you stated it was, it was first that one board member wanted just to meet with Mr. Problowski.
That was me.
And then there was another board member. And then you intervened and said, well, let's just have a study session so that we're all together, we could ask the questions if there needs to be, and then we could then take a vote. That's what I recall.
Okay. Well, since board member Garcia is not here and she could see this, this meeting online, we will take the vote in September with, with, with the description, if it passes in September, that same night, we will come up with the description. So meanwhile, you guys think about, if it does pass, think about what you would like on the election ballot, two years, three-year term, two years, not come back anymore, two years, take a term off, then come back, or any other description you would like to see on the election ballot if it passes.
And between now and then, I would recommend, we have to run this by the attorneys as well. Is that correct, Mr.? We have to look at the ballot language and make sure the ballot language is corrected. They're going to vote on this in September, which is what our board president is stating.
If the board will take action immediately after, I would recommend that, that we do that. My only question is, we need to advise counsel. I'm not sure how the board will discuss language if I need to get attorney's approval. It might be that we ask the attorney to bring a couple of recommendations of language and then the board can take action.
And we can provide that.
Can, can the attorney provide us that on the Wednesday before, just like when we get the agenda and all that? And then that way we, we will be prepared so when we come in September to make both, both the, the putting and placing on the ballot. And if it passes, we could just go forward with whatever description we want instead of waiting another month?
Absolutely. And just to be clear, so what we're going to ask the attorney to bring that, since the board wants potential override language, we're going to ask the attorney to give a couple of recommendations. I would ask the board to take action when we gather a Wednesday vote.
Correct. Correct. Any other questions or discussions on that? Okay.
Which is coming up very soon.
Which is September 9th, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So in about three weeks. So, okay, so for the record, we're going to come back in September, make the vote to place term limits on the ballot. If it passes, we will do the description that same night. And that way it's done, we, we go on forward to something else. Okay. Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn this meet. Yes.
Another question. Another one. Who votes, sir? One, two, three, four, this person, five, or all five seats?
No. It's the, it's the board, the five of us. Yes, your five board members that represent the community.
If two of you are in favor and three of you are against it, then it doesn't pass.
That's correct.
I mean, somebody on the board wants to keep their foot in the door and keep holding on with vote to their job, right?
Well, we can't say that, sir. What we can say is that we all have our own votes and whatever the majority of the vote is, that's what it is. No matter if we go against it or for it, it's in the books, the majority. That's why we always say on the board, it's a team. No matter, just as you mentioned, we could all get upset if it doesn't pass, but whatever the majority chooses, that's what we have to go by, sir. And that is, that is our democracy.
What if somebody doesn't care what?
Then I guess we would probably postpone because it would be a tie two to two, so we would have to bring it back up to the, to another meeting.
And if someone, if someone before is no longer able to get on the ballot, if it goes into the election, but she don't have a chance to vote on. Do you need to get this person in?
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm the president, sorry, we don't go there. What it is, is that if it does not pass, it just does not pass, that we don't, we cannot do anything for 2020. It doesn't say we cannot bring it up in future, but for the 2020, whatever the outcome is in September, that's the outcome. I know the residents are hoping, because that's what this research shows, the residents are hoping, but we cannot guarantee until we take a vote. I know that all residents have seen this online, have come here in person, but, but it's okay. It's, but, but you're learning it tonight, ma'am. So what I'm saying is that it's the majority. And not just for term limits, it's all issues. When we take a vote, it's the majority that wins. No matter if a resident gets upset, no matter even after the vote, if I have my neighbor come and tell me, but Carmen, da, 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 sorry, the majority spoke. And unfortunately, that's the way our democracy works. Thank you. With, with that, board member Hanson moved to, moved to adjourn the meeting at 6:12 PM. May I have a second?
I'll second.
So I need to, I need a second. Hobbies in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's four zero. Meeting adjourned. Now we have a, a second agenda. We have a special meeting of the Board of Education Agenda, August 26, 2019. May I have a roll call, please? Oh, says 6:30? Oh, I didn't know. Okay, sorry. We'll have to wait till 6:30 for that. I was, it's my mistake, I, now I read it. It says 6:30. It's on the agenda.
I don't know. Listen. Okay. Let me make sure I know what I'm doing. Oh. Yes. For some reason, I thought this was my, okay. Okay.